Is it just on? It is. This is. Okay, Alan, three, two, one. Managers' mic, testing one, two, three. County clerks' mic, testing one, two, three. Attorneys' mic, testing one, two, three. Lopez' mic, testing one, two, three. Dennis' mic, testing one, two, three. Pete Meitzner test, one, two, three. Howell's mic, testing one, two, three. Beatty's mic, testing one, two, three.
I reminded you and asked you. So for today's joke, did you know that ten plus ten and eleven plus eleven are the same thing? Because ten plus ten is twenty and eleven plus eleven is twenty-two.
Where are we at time-wise now? The microphone wasn't kicking in. Are we at a minute already?
It was so good, it was terrible.
Thirty seconds. Fifteen. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, commissioners. Welcome to the Wednesday, November eighth meeting. And thank you for those that are here joining us live and others that are watching on KPTS and our Facebook and channels and YouTube channels. So anyway, with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. November is National Veterans and Military Families Month. We want to recognize our active-duty military and veteran families that answer our nation's call to duty, and we recognize their service and sacrifice. We put together a short video to honor this month.
As I was finishing high school, I didn't have a big plan for my life, but I knew that I wanted to serve, and I wanted to serve in the Marine Corps. In 2000 and 2001, we did a standard unit deployment to Okinawa, Japan, which was interesting, and spent some time in the Philippines while I was there. My military occupational specialty there was aviation ordinance, which is aircraft, weapons, and weapon systems.
She joined the Army National Guard when I was in high school. So really getting to watch her grow through that process, those initial trainings and basic training, it was really fun to see that, and I think it really, you know, solidified my dedication to giving back.
I'm a commander in the 161 Battalion in Newton, Kansas, for a field artillery unit. We send units out every quarter in the state of Kansas. It's just part of being in the guard, because guardsmen deploy more frequently, and it's part of being in a field artillery state, because those assets are just needed.
I think that when she went on her first deployment, it was 2020, I was in grad school at the time. Being able to lean on, you know, coworkers and being able to lean on family, it really made a big difference.
The discipline, the camaraderie, and the ability to give back in such a major way.
You learn the importance of morale and balancing good discipline and order with morale and not being too strict.
I think it's given me the courage to try new things that maybe I wouldn't have otherwise.
2002, 2003, I was on the 15th Marine Expeditionary Unit, and we went to Iraq. Going into that situation, it makes a lot of other things seem like they're just not really problems at all anymore. Gives you a very calm perspective when it comes to, you know, issues at work or not life and death here.
I think military service comes with a lot of fear. You have to learn, just trust your training and trust that your family's going to support you, and mine does, and that's great, whether it be Zoe or my mom or my husband. And I, yeah, I joined for this reason, so I don't fear a lot.
Very nice.
I also want to remind everyone that county offices will be closed Friday, November 10th, 2023, an observant of Veterans Day. Emergency services are available by dialing or texting 911. Also want to share that you can find Cedric County in the Veterans Day Parade on Saturday that starts at 11 o'clock. The Metropolitan Area Planning Department is hosting a solar power town hall on Thursday, November 16th, at the Cedric County Extension Office. The event will start at 4:30 and focus on the potential for commercial solar energy. A presentation from MAPD will start at 6:00 PM with opportunities for the public to ask questions and share feedback. For more information, visit cedriccounty.org/solar. For today's good news, I have Andrew Deltz here from Facilities regarding this year's energy savings. Sir?
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Brief update, a few years ago, the county entered an agreement with EverGee to purchase renewable power, and this year, that, a result of that contract, has resulted in a $151,000 savings year-to-date. We'll see what it ends up at the end of the year, but we're anticipating that to go up a little bit more.
Okay, wow, that is good news. Thank you.
And that's all I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Nicole, as always.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't think anybody signed up on the public agenda sheet. Anybody addressing? I don't see anything, so next item, please.
Proclamations, item A, proclamation declaring National Apprenticeship Week.
Okay, Commissioner Howell's going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its ninth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers in Cedric County and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas Cedric County recognizes the role of registered apprenticeships in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities, to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And whereas Cedric County recognizes that registered apprenticeship as a proven and industry-driven training model is a key strategy to improving job quality and creating access to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all, starting with the youth and young adults, while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners hereby proclaim November 13 through 19, 2023, as National Apprenticeship Week in Cedric County and urge all of our citizens to join in this observation. Mr. Chairman, I am very pleased to present this proclamation today, and I would make a motion to adopt this proclamation."
Second. Motion is second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just say that, again, we have a great individual from our community. His name is Keith Lawing. I don't know that I see him in the audience at the moment. He may be unable to be here at the moment, but I do serve on the Workforce Development Board, and I am, I know that Keith is an incredible individual. He is so able to lead this, lead this idea in our community. He's a tremendous individual. And I can tell you personally, apprenticeships is something I think that Cedric County has really enjoyed, and give this to our communications folks. Our apprenticeships have really, we've enjoyed our apprenticeships here in Cedric County, getting to know, getting to know people that are maybe in college or in the community that are trying to get their resume moving forward, same time getting that experience. And so we have some folks who, I guess...
Amanda Duncan.
Oh, Amanda, I see her now. Amanda Duncan, thanks for being here today. Would you come forward, I guess, as well? All right?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Can I accept it?
Anyway, I can't say enough good things about our apprenticeship programs in Cedric County, and as I've gotten to learn, other folks that are filling these positions, to build up your resume and get experience, at the same time, you're getting those credentials that you need for those positions is just incredible strategy. So thank you for that. Thanks for being here this morning. Please introduce yourself, and thank you for being here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is John Clark, and I'm the president of the Kansas Apprenticeship Council, as well as the Training Director for the Plumbers and Pipefitters Apprenticeship Training. And I want to thank you for the proclamation and let everybody know that, yes, Kansas apprenticeships are growing, not only in Cedric County but across the state of Kansas. We're a great model to help people earn and learn and get to that high-wage-paying job and life-sustaining job, so we appreciate that. Just a reminder, next week is National Apprenticeship Week, and at our facility on West Cala, we're having an apprenticeship summit that's open to the public. Anybody that wants to come, they can certainly do that.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Amanda, good morning, and thanks for what you do.
I don't think she wants to say anything, but I'll just tell you, she's an amazing person. She does a presentation that, if you missionaries have not heard that presentation, it's incredible what workforce does in this community. I know that apprenticeships is a huge part of that strategy, so again, thank you, Amanda, for what you do.
Amanda, you want to come in front? We'll take a quick picture.
Oh, yeah.
Christian Lopez.
Sorry, if I could just say something real quick. I just want to thank you both for, for being here today. Connor's also here, so thank you for coming as well, but I, the work that you guys are doing in our workforce, I mean, what a challenge that you are facing, and it's just so important that we have people like you doing that work. So thank you so much for coming today and kind of sharing about that. I would love to get the information about next week's event. I would love to stop by and see what that's about, so if we could get that before you leave. And I just, again, just thank you for being here today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to take a quick picture on the stairs outside. Thank you. We're going to take a quick picture on the stairs outside.
Good morning. How you doing? That's exactly right.
How are you? I am going to send you something, you know, getting it, like Doug getting it.
Okay, we have returned. Excuse me. Next item, please.
New business, Item B, approval of statement of final costs and assessments rule. Establish a public hearing regarding proposed special assessments for certain road improvements, projects in the county, and provide notice thereof.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Packard.
Commissioners. I am here, for the record, Lynn Packard, Director of Public Works and County Engineer. I am here with Lindsay Poe Rousseau, your Chief Financial Officer. And before you is a statement of final costs for a developer-driven special assessment project that we call Shrees Woods Phase Two. Phase Two with Shrees Woods is for the street improvements of a small area of the subdivision, seven lots total. This located southwest of Wichita in a triangular area between K-42, 119th Street West, and MacArthur Road in District Two. The district was created on July 14th, 2021. The improvements are now complete, and the final costs have been calculated. The base authorization, when the benefit district was created, was for an amount not to exceed $272,000. The actual final costs come in at $214,276.94. This results in a principal cost per lot of $30,610.99 to be paid off over a 15-year period. Those are the basics of the project and the costs. Lindsay will come up now to discuss the next steps in the process.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poe Rousseau, your CFO. So what you have before you this morning is project work that has really already been authorized by the Commission, as Lynn has outlined. So there are seven lots that would be affected. What we will do through today's resolution is you will set a public hearing for folks to come in and give you any concerns they may have. I will tell you, at the time this was approved, 100% of the property owners approved this, so we don't necessarily expect a lot of turnout on that December 6th public hearing, but you are required by statute to have that. Once you have that public hearing and close that public hearing, you will authorize staff to move forward, basically with issuing, well, allowing property owners to pay their fair share within 30 days. Then if they don't want to pay it all upfront, we would essentially bond fund any gap between what is not paid by the property owners in advance and what still remains on the books. We would issue bonds for that, and as Lynn said, that would be repaid over a 15-year period from anyone who owns that property, and that is also in accordance with the county's special assessment policy. And so we would estimate those costs to be around $30,610 per lot, again, to be repaid over 15 years. So that is kind of our next middle stage of this process. We'll have that public hearing. We'll have some bond issuances. The next agenda item you'll hear will be another part of that bond issuance that we anticipate having around January or February. So with that, you can see that there is quite a bit of activity listed in the recommended action. And so I would ask Commissioners to adopt the resolution and take all of the subsequent action recommended here. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, please take those actions.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I think most of us are familiar with that process, but it's good to have the refresher and good for the public to hear. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Should I read the whole thing here, since there's multiple?
I'll defer to Justin to see if that's necessary.
With the public hearing?
Commissioner Lopez, I think you just say, "Take the recommended action," and that would incorporate all the steps in there.
Okay, well, then I'll move that we take the recommended action.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, there's a motion and second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103, and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
Again, good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Lindsay Poe Rousseau, your CFO. We are going to get lots of quality time together this morning. So for this item, as we just discussed, we're contemplating that we will need to do some project work for some projects that the Commission approved as a part of the 2023 Capital Improvement Project. So we have done this multiple times where we come to you and basically say, before we start actually doing the work, we need your project authorization to start doing that work in order to preserve our ability to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds at the conclusion of the work on these projects. So there are three that were approved to be at least partially funded with bond funds as a part of your 2023 CIP, so this was adopted in August 2022. Within your backup, you can see that while the total projects cost $5.85 million, or at least that's the estimate, we are estimating about $4.25 million of that will be funded with bond proceeds. And so what we are asking for you to do today is to allow us to start the work and do all of the documents that are necessary in order to preserve that ability. And so just for the record, these projects are B-485, the bridge on 151st Street West over the Ninnisaw River; B-502, the bridge on Greenwich Road between 109th Street North and 117th Street North; and then finally, B-518, which is a bridge on 79th Street South between West Street and Meridian Avenue. And so of course, Lynn Packard is here if you have any questions about the substantive bridges themselves, but otherwise, this is just a normal part of the process, and we'll come back to you later when it's actually time to reimburse ourselves with these proceeds. So I'm happy to stand for questions. Otherwise, I recommend that you authorize the resolution.
Okay, thanks for the explanation. Any questions? I'll make a motion. Oh, Commissioner Howell, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. So this is a repair and refurbishment of these existing bridges, is that correct?
That is correct. In this particular case, each one of these is going to be a replacement project.
Okay, so they're all going to be replaced?
That's correct.
Sometimes when we see these types of resolutions, normally it talks about the sufficiency rating of the existing bridge. I don't see that anywhere in the backup material. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes. So usually when we talk about that is when we're bringing up the project itself for consideration into the CIP. In this particular case, we have B-485. That's the bridge over the Ninnisaw River south of Clearwater. That structure, I don't have the SSIA in front of me, but I believe that sufficiency rating is below 50. It is a 600-foot-long, what we call pin-and-hanger bridge. Pin-and-hanger bridges, we have, I think, four left in the county. They have some vulnerable components in it that we are actively replacing those bridges. We're no longer using that type of structure. So this is a good project for this location, as we will not have that pin-and-hanger anymore. Those require special inspections. B-502 is a bridge on Greenwich Road, up between 109th Street North and 117th Street North in District Four. It is the... That is a much smaller structure that is, again, due for replacement due to some poor conditions on the, I believe, in that particular case, it's the substructure. On Project B-518, that's a bridge on 79th Street South between West Street and Meridian. That is, again, I believe that is a box culvert, a box bridge, a smaller bridge structure that, again, is deteriorating and in need of replacement.
All right, thank you. I have one other question for Lindsay. Thank you. Just reminded me, again, so 4.25 million in bonds for these three projects. What's the term of the debt for these?
15 years, because it's special assessment. That's set by our special assessment policy.
All right, thank you. It's all my question. Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is 20 years. This is normal.
That's what I thought it would be.
I apologize.
And again, I don't need it right now, but I'm just curious what the total interest expected we would pay on these bonds would be.
Okay, I will get that together for you. We did just recently update our projected interest rates to 5%, so I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll get that for you and email it to you.
That's fine. Thank you again. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question's probably to Lynn. KDOT provides funding periodically for bridge replacement. Are we able to use any of that funding, or can we get any to help offset the cost of these projects?
We submitted, over the course of the last five or six years, we submitted two of these structures, B-502 and B-485, for such grant money, but we did not receive any grant money on any three of these bridges. So we are splitting this between local sales tax and bonding for the payment of these projects.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay. Don't see any of the comments. Make a motion that we approve. Take the recommended action. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you again, Lindsay. Next item, please.
Item D, consideration of an American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA spending plan update.
All right. Hello again, Commissioners.
Good morning again.
For the record, Lindsay Poe Rousseau, your CFO. So before you this morning, you should have a packet that looks like this. What this packet includes, and we'll walk through it briefly, is a very brief PowerPoint slide, a handout that we'll talk about, and then finally, a spending plan at the very end. So as you all recall, and we're going to do a bit of a refresher, just because it's been a while since we've done a bit of a refresher. So for Commissioners and the public, just a reminder of where we have been and why we're even talking about this today. So back in 2021, COVID had gone on longer than expected, and the federal government passed what is known as the American Rescue Plan Act, and it was designed to be a recovery as opposed to CARES, which was a response bill. And so the feds gave states, local governments, and tribal governments specific dollars through a tranche called Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. There was a formula that was used to provide funding directly to certain counties and cities, and then funding was given to states to distribute to some of the smaller entities. And so $350 billion in total was allocated. Sedgwick County received of that $100,235,109. And again, we received that directly from the feds. We received it in two, what they call tranches, one in 2021 and one in 2022. We were told that we had until 2024 to obligate those funds, which basically means enter into formal contracts or obligations, and we had until the end of 2026 to actually pay out those funds. So that is the situation that we find ourselves in today, is going through and adopting plans. Now, there has been a significant chunk of funding that has flown or has come into our community as well. And so the city of Wichita, for example, and just yesterday with our homelessness conversation, they allocated a portion of these funds. They received $72.4 million. There is a handout in your packet that also shows what other cities in Sedgwick County received in total. They received about $13.6 million. And again, also, we had USDs, so school districts that received funding through ARPA through a different allocation, not this CSLFRR, but they received $88.3 million of additional funds. So all told, between Sedgwick County cities and USDs, we have received cumulatively about $274.6 million in allocations through formula funding from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act. And of course, the state of Kansas itself received just under $1.6 billion, of which a portion was allocated to some of these folks and even to us for the mental health hospital. The authorized uses under the American Rescue Plan Act were the original five that are shown here. We could do the response to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative economic impacts. We could do premium pay for our essential frontline workers. And again, if you recall during COVID, we were losing folks en masse, and so that's why the federal government allowed that program. We could do the cost of government services to the extent that funding was reduced by the COVID-19 public health emergency. So yesterday, we talked about that in staff meeting with the calculation that the feds have provided. We have computed that Sedgwick County government would be able to use these funds up to $91 million based on computations through 2023 for essentially what is called revenue replacement. We also could do funding in investments, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, but we also know there was significant funding allotted through other streams to take some of the burden of those projects off of the county. And then in 2023, a new bill was passed that allowed counties and governments to do certain surface transportation and natural disasters so that the surface transportation projects, we don't have any that would be eligible, and certainly we haven't had, thankfully, any natural disasters that would qualify for this. But that was an additional use of COVID recovery funding that was authorized earlier this year, and we have an interim final rule. Again, on that, still not a final rule. So also, just a reminder of why we chose to use the funds in the fashion we did is because of language like this that was throughout the final rule. And so just to remind you all, this is what that final rule looks like. So there's lots and lots of direction that they gave us throughout this. When people say, "Can we do X thing with our funding?" The consistent response is, "Yes, but you have to consider whether and the extent to which the group that's coming to us for funding has experienced a negative economic impact from the pandemic, so we have to be able to draw that connection." And then, if and when we do provide aid for that, it has to be proportional to that negative economic impact. So we can't go in and fix something unless we can prove that it was exacerbated by the pandemic. So with those guidelines in mind, that's how we came up with this original spend plan, excuse me. So what you can see on this slide is the last time we came to you in June. This is how the spend plan looked. You can see that the significant resources of our $100.2 million were invested in court backlog and public safety, which we will talk more about here in a moment, public health response, premium pay, which is well behind us in our rearview mirror, and then we had some funding for contingency as well. So those were the key highlights. Now, since then, we have worked with departments to refresh our figures, and you will see that there are a number of changes in these overall groups. And we'll get into the actual spend plan to look at these, but I just want to hit on some highlights now. So within public health response, overall, from June to now, what you'll see is the spend plan request is reduced by about $1.8 million in aggregate for all of the different projects that are encompassed within public health response. The bulk of that was within the Health Department. They have reduced a significant number of FTE asks. Those that remain focus mostly on either some disease investigation or preparedness, looking forward to maybe what a next pandemic would look like. looking forward to maybe what a next pandemic would look like. Many of those positions are slated to be phased out, actually well before the end of 2024. There is additional information. I can get you on each of those positions, uh, if you would like, but in no case are any of those positions expected to remain in place past the end of 2024, and the Health Department does not intend to come and ask for any of those to stay on their permanent staffing table. Another big change from the last time we spoke in June is the Recovery Connector Program. You might recall this is our Community Navigator Program. Um, this is where we tried to connect resources for individuals and nonprofits that were affected by COVID with some possible resources to help them get back on their feet. WSU is no longer in a position to accept these federal funds, and so the program is slated to close actually at the end of this year. And so that results in savings of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, court backlog, you'll see this has a significant increase. Overall, when looking at all of the projects included in the public safety and court backlog grouping, we are estimated to increase that part of the plan by about three point oh million, and you'll have a bid board item later today that talks a lot about this. But essentially, we have talked from the beginning of the ARPA spend plan about the idea of the long-term workforce shortage that we know the sheriff has and that we don't necessarily expect to be fully remedied anytime really soon, especially as the economic data continues to come out with, there's two jobs for every person looking for a job. And so to use ARPA in a way to proactively help the county in the long term, the idea is to place cameras throughout the jail to add additional master control space and as well as replace locks to improve life safety and risk to our deputies and our inmates. And so when we look at those costs of doing the cameras, um, doing the wiring and everything that's necessary in order to execute that project, uh, we expect that project to increase by a little more than three million. So when we take all of these programs together, again, these are just highlights of key changes, not every change, um, what we see is that we need to reduce the overall contingency by eight hundred forty thousand dollars in order to reallocate the funding as necessary across these other projects. So what you see and what we propose today is a spend plan that basically, uh, still ties out to one hundred point two million, as you would expect. That public health response figure has come down, your court backlog and public safety number has gone up. It still remains the largest single consumer of ARPA dollars, um, for the county. But again, we continue to think this is, uh, a strategically wise use of these funds because otherwise, these costs would be borne by the general fund or by taxpayers, potentially even through debt service, uh, or it would reduce our ability to do these projects in a timely fashion. So we still think that that's the right use of these dollars based on everything we've learned. Overall, again, the contingency comes down to thirteen point two million, and we remain with the one hundred point two million dollar allocation. We plan to continue to come back to you each quarter, um, to talk about, uh, these projects. And of course, as bids come in or projects change, we may come back to you even sooner if we need to make some allocation changes, excuse me, to dip into that contingency, but otherwise, we plan to come back to you every quarter. So I did say that we would also talk about your spend plan itself. So if you go to the final page of your printed packet, you will see a page that looks like this. And so for each of these projects, you can see the specifics of what we have spent thus far through June of 2023, actual money out the door, not just obligations, but just the money we've spent, the budget for July through December, the budget for 2024, the grand totals that you've already seen shown on your PowerPoint but aggregated by group. So for example, public health response, as we said, includes more than just the Health Department. It's also emergency management or risk fit testing, uh, some of the communications that we're doing. And then, of course, on the, the far right side, you can see what the plan was the last time you approved it, and then the dollar difference compared to each of those. And so, um, we're certainly happy to go through any of these points. I know we've briefed you, but if other questions have come up, we're certainly happy to talk about those. And this will be posted out on the county's ARPA website so that folks in the community can look at this and ask any questions, um, if they want to. I would also highlight, um, one change, though you're not going to see a big dollar change, technical assistance and consultants under ARPA management. We have now allotted two hundred thousand dollars of our direct allocation from the feds toward, um, support of the mental health hospital to make sure that from a county perspective, we can remain fully compliant with those funds that the feds have given us. So with that, I am very happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I encourage you to approve the spending plan as pro, as proposed, excuse me.
Question from Commissioner Dennis. Thank you, Commissioner Sherman, and thank you, Lindsey. I appreciate it. Uh, you know, I've talked to you before, one of my goals is to retain as much money as we can in, uh, our ARPA contingency, so at the end of this, we can roll it over into the general fund because we've got a lot of expenses coming up that we could use out of the general fund. So just to let you know, I'm, I'm going to vote for what you had today, okay?
Thank you.
But we're going to review this, I think, in February again.
Yes, every quarter.
And in February, you're going to have to do a good job of explaining to me about Health Department, uh, because I think we're past a lot of these things. You're going to have to explain to me the risk fit tester position a lot closer, uh, the ARPA temp positions for grant and purchasing, the ARPA positions and accounts payable, uh, because we're pretty well past, uh, the, the COVID and the recovery phase. So at this point, anything that we can cut out of this and move into contingency that we can use in other places, I, I hope we can scrub this before February and, and see where we can save some money and move it into, to contingency. So again, I'll vote for it today, uh, but I, I wanted to, to make sure that we look at it pretty closely before, by, in February.
We'll be happy to do that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? You hit the highlights on that very, on that slide there, and so you, you talked to the big ones and you, we all have been reviewed, so if there's any other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, at the updated spending plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for all your work on this. Next item, please.
Item E, emergency shelter discussion.
Commissioners, uh, I think the manager wants to say a few comments and then I think we'll make them, I want to make a motion to defer this, uh, a week, but Tom.
Thanks, Chairman. Good morning, Commission. Uh, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, uh, we'd like to defer this item for one week. Um, this, the, the concept of the emergency shelter, um, discussion has been going on for just a couple, three weeks, and it came together very quickly. Uh, the council took, City Council, Wichita City Council, took some actions yesterday which, uh, focused this up a little bit for us, but my staff needs a little bit of time to reach out to, uh, I need to reach out to city manager, we need to talk to CFO on the city side, uh, and so I would ask for one week of, uh, analysis and data time to come back to you next week with options and more, a more clear presentation.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tom. I'm also, I'm in favor of this, uh, this pause so that we can really analyze on our end exactly what we're dealing with. You had mentioned that City of Wichita, uh, took up this action yesterday in, I believe, altogether a seven-hour meeting at City of Wichita. I watched the bulk of it. There was a lot of conversation and public comment, uh, and a lot of, uh, individuals from the community came to voice, uh, support, voice concerns. Uh, it was a pretty robust discussion. We've been talking about the emergency winter shelter for, uh, for the better part of a couple months, um, and the need for a plan, uh, because this was a crisis situation. I would say that the bulk of the services being provided now for shelter, uh, food for homelessness, uh, are, are happening in my district and District Four. A lot of it in Midtown, some in Riverside, and this new emergency winter shelter in northeast Wichita is also in my district. Uh, so I've heard a variety of conversation and feedback from people in the community. I think it's, uh, appropriate to say that this location that Wichita has chosen for the, uh, emergency winter shelter is not the perfect location. I don't know if the perfect location frankly exists. The challenges with this location are we already have, uh, an environment, uh, off Twenty-first Street that is economically, uh, challenged and has been for a generation, frankly. Um, and then we're taking another, uh, challenging circumstance and overlaying it over here. The, the, the challenges are obvious, and I think it's important that the community understands that, um, I, I don't know anyone that says this location is the perfect location. Um, it is a challenging location, yet the balance is in saving lives, uh, for an emergency winter shelter. A reminder, forty-eight people and, uh, died in downtown Wichita last winter. So this is a situation of crisis proportion that we needed to, uh, the city has to move to, to, to save lives. I would also say that the conversation around the entire homelessness ecosystem is not limited to emergency winter shelter. It is not. Uh, this is a much broader conversation. The root causes of homelessness are diverse, um, the impact of this community is diverse and complex, and our response has to be collaborative. It's going to require nonprofit, it's going to require the city, it's going to require the county, the state, uh, business, faith, community. This is an all-in effort, and, and I would just say, as we're, as we're deferring to have this conversation next week about our part, I want to encourage those in the community, the county's at the table. The county understands that we too have a role to play in these conversations, and we're going to do our part to make sure that we're leading in this space. Um, and, and we're also going to do our part on the interim plan, that on April first, when the emergency winter shelter closes, uh, that we're going to have a stake at the table as well, uh, trying to shape what the interim plan is as we move forward for the long-term plan. So conversation's not going to stop with the emergency winter shelter. We're not going to allow it to stop at the emergency winter shelter, and we're going to continue to try to lead and support and demonstrate to the community that all levels of government have a stake in this and that we're going to do our best to, uh, to move the ball forward and support this community and support of the economic interests of the broader region. So, uh, appreciate, we'll be supportive of this, uh, and moving it forward. I'm excited for the next week of conversation. So, thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Um, I have a question, Tom. If we push this back a week, that's not going to impact what they're doing at the city at all? Like, they can still move forward with their plan, and that won't hold them back a week? I just want to verify if that's correct.
Right. The, the council yesterday voted for, the number is six hundred and eighty-five thousand. The pro forma for the, the, the winter shelter through the end of March was, uh, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, of which HK, Humankind, came up with two hundred thousand, and the city yesterday, the council voted for the six eighty-five. It has been, the city manager made it clear to me a couple of weeks ago that we need, they need county support on that six eighty-five. Um, and I think it was mentioned yesterday during the public meeting as well that that was the expectation. Uh, but to answer your question, it is moving forward. They, they, they voted yesterday to fund it. It's moving north. It's, it's going to happen, so.
Okay, thank you. And I just had, um, a quick comment. When we had our meeting on Friday between the city, county, and, and state, I had, um, voiced a few concerns that I had, and, and while I think those are, you know, legitimate because of exactly what Commissioner Beatty was speaking about was, you know, taking, um, a community and who needs support and putting them in a, in a community that also is also underserved already, um, I do want to thank the city because I think they've done a really good job from, you know, this point forward on engaging people and trying to have community members and business leaders of the area, um, at the table to look at their plan so they can mitigate concerns and, and really put a better plan that makes everybody more comfortable with this going forward. So I do want to thank them for, for doing that, and when, last weekend, I called Kelly Billiffield, which is the superintendent for USD two-five-nine, excuse me, um, because I had, one of my concerns was just there's, there's all these schools there, and if you live close enough to a school, you don't, um, get to take a bus. And so I asked him to see if it was possible, if we could temporarily, while the shelter is running, just bus kids to school. And so he was going to work with, um, his transportation guy and see if they could come up with a plan. Um, he said it might take about a week to come up with, but he thought that it would be ready to go by time, um, the facility opens. And so I was just hoping that maybe you could reach out to him and see, um, what that plan is, and there will obviously be a price tag associated with it. He didn't think it would be significant because some of the kids at the middle school are already bused because it's a magnet school, so they're not all necessarily just from that area. And I just wanted to make sure that, um, whatever that looks like, I think the county and city and schools should come together for that because we're talking about the kids in our community. And, and again, I don't think it'll be a, a large price tag by any means, but if you wouldn't mind reaching out to Kelly and just seeing, um, what that looks like so we can make sure that those kids get bused, just temporarily. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not able to listen to that meeting yesterday, and I, I plan to catch up, um, with, uh, with the information that was presented, uh, yesterday. Um, I, I might like to know if our staff has, um, essentially, did they actually, um, listen to the parts of the meeting that impacts this discussion? Do we have that data out of the city council meeting yesterday?
Their, their agenda item had backup material that is pretty comprehensive. Uh, Lindsey and I were reviewing that late yesterday afternoon. Uh, we think that document gives us a good foundation going forward on what the county's role of this will be and, and technically, how we'll go forward. We just need to piece it together and get you guys the information and present it publicly.
Well, next week, we have KAC, uh, I believe is, is supposed to happen, is that next week?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, so, 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 as far as that, never mind. We might want to talk about this during staff meeting, I, I think.
I do.
I, I have some concerns. You know, we talked about consolidation of government, and one thing that seems like it's, it's tempting, uh, a lot of times is we, we try to equivocate city and county governments to say we both have, you know, equal share of whatever going on. Again, I know that they're not proposing equal share on this one, but we have split the mission, so to speak. Again, they're making all of the decisions, but they want some revenue from the county. And what I'm wondering right now is, from a taxpayer perspective, is that, does that really make sense? You know, for example, we are leading on nine-one-one, we lead on EMS. I really, I don't, again, if we, if we need to enhance those, uh, services, I really think the county needs to step up and provide whatever level of services needed for, for this entire community. And, uh, we've led on mental health, um, regarding our com care, uh, services and our public health, uh, care services, and our public safety services in other areas, emergency management's another great example. And again, if we were to, uh, separate those out and say that city and county have equal shares of responsibility in these things, what ends up happening is actually the opposite of consolidation. It actually, actually puts a double burden, if you will, on, on Wichita taxpayers. So I'm a little concerned about this always thinking that it has to be city and county funding to every one of these ideas. Again, I don't know their status, but, uh, that sounds like they've already earmarked essentially the money one way or the other. I, have we looked at their finances to find out? Uh, is this simply just to ask, or is there some kind of a, are they using ARPA money to, yeah, we just went through an ARPA presentation a minute ago. I don't know if this is really related to ARPA. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I don't know how they make that argument, but, um, I am concerned about future years because ARPA money's is, is time limited, and if we're in the, we're in the mode now of providing government funding to these programs, eventually, that's no longer going to work. And by us doing this even this time, it, I think, creates a precedent that we're going to be partners, uh, financial partners in this going forward. So I'm a little concerned about, uh, you know, we're not, I don't think we are intending to use, what they ask for us is not going to be ARPA dollars, I don't believe. Is that correct?
I'll answer while Lindsey's, Lindsey's coming to the podium, we can tag team this, but it's my understanding that it's asking for two hundred thousand. I don't know that, it's not our intention to designate ARPA funds to do that. From what I heard, and, and I was in and out of the meeting yesterday just watching it on, on, uh, the computer, but it's my understanding that they are using the six eighty-five they designated is ARPA funding. Um, so, but our, how we spend it, that's why I want to give you options next week on funding, if you want to fund it, and what that would look like.
So, um, Lindsey Prosser, CFO, the agreement that they signed yesterday, they are doing under the revenue replacement provision of ARPA, but even if they were not, the homelessness is a, a, um, depending on how you look at it, it is an eligible use of ARPA funds. However, we have gone through a process, we would have to redo our process in order to use our ARPA funds for this, and so that's why we would propose that any dollars we would give would be general fund. So, um, I don't know that they care where the money comes from, but certainly, we do, and that'll be a part of our conversation.
I need some time to think on this. I need to catch up with the meeting yesterday, and, uh, but again, I think we ought to maybe have staff this next week because, to me, this is more, more complex than just a, but an agenda item during the BOCC meeting next week. I think this is, this is really complicated, and, and honestly, um, from the taxpayers' perspective, I don't know that it makes sense to have two sources of funding for this. Um, I think there should be, um, a long-term plan, not just a, uh, this is almost like a Band-Aid to, to solve the problem. And I understand the pressure this year. I'm glad that there's a solution coming forward, but I'm, I'm concerned about what does this mean going forward after that. So I've got a lot of concerns and questions, and I, let me say also, the state of Kansas is actually having a meeting on this tomorrow. And again, I'm, I, I hope we tune into that and, and encourage our state to, to consider, you know, what is their role in all of this, because a lot of these folks are from Wichita, but there's a lot of folks that are from outside of our community too. that are from outside of our community too. So I think we ought to have that conversation at the state level. This is a very, one of the more complicated topics I think we've ever taken up here as a, as a BOCC. And again, just to, just to commit $200,000 to this out of property tax funds, I think misses a much larger discussion than it really needs to happen. All right. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Well, I will support a motion to defer this until next week because I still got questions myself on exactly how that we fit. As we, we provide things like com care crisis, that, that's our lane. We provide health department, that's our lane. We, we provide services that help the homeless and people that, that are in need. I want to make sure we stay in our lane. So I'm going to have some questions that I need answered. So if we could set up a meeting with Lindsay and Tom, or whoever else needs to be involved in it before, so that I truly understand that if we put 200,000 of general funds in this, is that our lane? Or should we be providing other services that fit into our lane better? Thank you.
Well, I'll just summarize that I did attend yesterday's meeting, and it was extensive. Many, you know, a, a large number of citizens, questions, and then the, the bench and the council and legal and Sally Stang and Latasha from Humankind were answering a lot of questions that, that, a lot of these questions that you all are, are bringing up right now. And so, at about four o'clock, I think, when it was ended, I came back and met with the manager and Lindsay, and, and I said, I don't think that we were ready to make a decision 12 hours later here this morning. So, I'm not sure what our decision and path will be, but it was, it was too rushed for us to, to make a, to make a, a quick decision. And we're getting more information, and I'm sure all these questions will, will be answered. And maybe, maybe we can do it in one-on-one meetings, or if we need to workshop it, that's fine too. So, anyway. So, with that, unless there's another comment.
Yeah, I apologize. I just have a question. If we discuss this quick, I mean, we're going to have to discuss it quickly for the ask of the 200,000, but could we potentially do like a staff meeting just to have a conversation broader about what the county's role is when it comes to homelessness? I think, you know, it's, it's a conversation that's happening nationally when it comes to counties because for a long time, it's been kind of the split where counties haven't done a whole lot when it comes to homelessness. But that's shifting right now because there is such, so much overlap between mental health and substance abuse and homelessness, and it's all kind of in the same realm. And it really comes down to a public health crisis, and we're the health department. And I think that's kind of the justification that's happening across the country right now. So I do think this is a broader conversation that we should have publicly. And I don't want to rush it for this ask, but I, I think just going forward that we should probably discuss what our role is at the county when it comes to how much we should be involved with, with homelessness and, and all of it. So, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, on item E, I will make a motion that we defer for one week at next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, and thanks for the conversation here. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution to approve Cedric County 2024 holidays.
Good morning, Commissioner Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. In front of you today is a resolution to approve the 2024 holidays. There are 11 holidays that are proposed, and these are the same holidays that we observed in 2023. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. We all got a list of the holidays. It's same. And I understand from Lindsay, it's, those are all budgeted into the 24, 24 budget. And so, anyway.
That is correct.
Thank you for, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we recall the history of how we got to this point, last year was added later on and voted on to add a holiday. And at that time, I think we had some bad numbers. I, I love our CFO, but I still disagree with the way she calculates things. And our taxpayers are paying for services. That's, that's what we provide. We provide service. And as a result, every day that someone isn't working and they're drawing vacation pay or overtime pay because it is a vacation day, that's costing the taxpayers and they're not receiving any services. So last year, I objected to just adding a vacation day and not taking a look at the entire process. And at that time, when it was voted on, why, we asked the manager to go back and scrub it. And I don't see that it was scrubbed because all we're doing today is approving what we came up with at a later date last time. So, I'm going to go back and ask the same thing that we asked last time, is we need a thorough review, and I object to spending an extra almost $1 million of taxpayers' money for vacation day. So today, I will be voting against the adopted holiday. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the reminder, Commissioner Dennis. And I don't know if I like how this ended up. Again, it seemed, it seemed a little bit discouraging to go back and forth the way we did. And, and this has been a, a topic for a number of years at this point. One of the things I brought up during that discussion was the idea of a floating holiday. And again, I don't know if we made any progress on that at all. But it was a request, and I'm, I, I still think that there's many employees that would really like the opportunity for them to choose, if you will, the most important day of the year that they would like to exercise a floating holiday. We still keep the county offices open, and they ought to be a given number of options. Again, I'm not sure that we would necessarily suggest we're open on things like Christmas Day, or New Year's Day, or Labor Day, Memorial Day. But there's other, or Independence Day. There's a number of these, I think, are broadly recognized across our country. But there's other ones, I think, are more local, and they're local decisions. And I think on those, on those options, we ought to be able to give our employees an opportunity to pick what, you know, a day that they think that they value. And, you know, for some, some folks, maybe they want to do the, you know, Christmas Eve, for example. But anyway, I just think that there ought to be some, some consideration for our employees, again, in providing services to our, to our constituents at the same time, giving our employees something that they would really value and be able to use the way that they want. I think is a goal that we ought to continue to have. So with that, because, because of that, I would say I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the resolution as it currently is stated today. I would like to see us have that conversation once again. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the conversations around this. The conversation has centered around Juneteenth. This is the holiday that was added and the holiday that's, I appreciate the floating holiday conversation. I know some private organizations that, that take floating holidays. And I, I would like to stay focused on the premise that I think the biggest challenge walking into last year was staffing stability and staffing morale. This was the conversation that we were all having in our budget workshop conversations. And it's about staffing stability. Right now, with Juneteenth in particular, it's now federally recognized. The state of Kansas, this last month in October, now recognizes Juneteenth as a paid holiday. City of Wichita also recognizes Juneteenth.
Yes.
So, all the governments that we deal with on, in the state now, and the federal government are recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday leave. If, so our employees, particularly in public safety on Juneteenth, they'd be paying time and a half. Is that correct? But working, most public safety folks are still working on this day, but they're paid time and a half if they're required to show up. Is that correct?
They're paid straight holiday pay. So, if you will, it's double pay. So, they receive their regular wages plus holiday wages.
Plus holiday wage.
Yes.
So, if we don't have, for those that don't have Juneteenth recognized, on Juneteenth, if they show up, if our EMS shows up to a, a crisis scene with Wichita Fire, the Wichita Fire folks will be taking their holiday pay, and our EMS folks will not be making holiday pay, correct? If we didn't have Juneteenth as a recognized holiday.
In that scenario, yes.
And so, same with Wichita Police Department.
Yes.
I mean, this is, so, I say all that by saying that from a staffing morale, staffing stability standpoint, I think this is important from a morale standpoint for our staff. Second thing is, this county, for, before my time even, has made incredible steps in the inclusion department and the conversation around being inclusive. I, there is no way to have a conversation around Juneteenth without including the symbolic nature of what this means as a country. They're just, you can't do that. There's, this is a symbolic conversation for this country. It's a step forward. And, and so it's a staffing morale. It's symbolic. We have 2,700 employees in Cedric County government. We are leading this community. We did the same thing with parental, paid parental leave, is we see ourselves as those that are leading and setting the tone for a community. There's no way to get around the symbolic nature of Juneteenth and what it means to be an inclusive department by including this. So I, I appreciate the conversation, and I recognize the conversation is around the economic side of this. And to be good stewards over a budget, I think we certainly need to have that conversation. But we have to balance that with the capacity of leading an organization, the morale of this organization, what the symbol, the symbolic nature of what we do for a community. And for that matter and of itself, the 11 that I'm looking at right now, the 11 paid holidays, I'm in supportive of, particularly with Juneteenth being added and staying on this calendar as a paid holiday, for all the reasons I mentioned before. So, I will certainly be supportive of this, of this resolution. Thank you, Chairman.
And Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, if you would look at my notes and the bullet points I was going to make, I think Commissioner Beatty discovered the basic principle of that. So thank you for your comments. I do agree that, you know, we've done so much, and our priority for years now has been on our staffing and making sure that we're able to stabilize our staffing. And, and we've done and spent a lot of money on trying to offer change, I don't know, I can't think of the word right now. I apologize. But just making sure that our staff is paid what they deserve and, and that market rate. And there's just been a lot of time and effort to accomplish that. But another thing that we've also been talking about are our benefits that we provide. And, I mean, one huge benefit that we just passed was the eight-week parental leave, and I look at this as another benefit that we, that we offer. And when we're trying to recruit people to come work for us, this is just one more thing that we can say that we have. I, I think it would be really negative if we removed a holiday from people that, that already have it. And I think if we do that, it, it just, I, I don't know if it shows that we value our staff in the way that I think, I know that we all do. And so, I'm grateful that we have it, and I would be very supportive of keeping the holidays as they are. And when we look at equity in governance, I think this is a really, a really great thing that we're doing. And so I appreciate the work that's gone into all of the conversations around the holidays and what that looks like. But I do have one question, and Lindsay, I don't know if you want to answer it. Commissioner Dennis brought up the cost associated with it, and I just want to make sure that we, we heard that, what your thoughts are around the cost that's associated with an extra holiday. But can you say what you believe the actual costs are with it, just so we can, and everybody else that's listening can hear both, both of them?
Absolutely. So, for the record, Lindsay Purso, CFO, we just had our payroll manager actually this week pull the data for what a holiday costs after the adjustments were implemented for Evergreen. So what I'm going to tell you is the cost of what a holiday today will cost us. So, to Commissioner Dennis's point, there are folks, this is where we diverge on, on how we quantify the cost. There are folks who are already, they're being paid whether they're here or not. And so, for a holiday. So, the salaried folks, whether they're here or not, earn about $188,000 on a holiday. Our hourly staff earn about $414,000. And then, as Sheena said, when you actually show up to work on a holiday, you get paid your holiday rate, plus you get paid for the hours that you actually worked that day. So for the actual work, for the folks who show up on that day to work, it's $125,000 just in wages. So all told, that's $727,000 in wages. Now, of course, we have to pay payroll taxes on that. We pay capers, we pay unemployment, we pay the, the federal government for every dollar. So in total, we look at about $873,000 as the total cost of that day. Now, to Commissioner Meitzner's point, we have already built these into the budget. So at this point, we're not considering it new cost or additional cost per se, but in terms of quantifying the cost of a holiday, this is how that shakes out.
And so, when we look at, because if people were, if it was just a regular day, we would be spending how much to pay everybody that day?
About $600,000.
And so what's the difference between?
So that grand total, including payroll taxes, $150,000 for the actual work on the day.
Okay.
So in terms of what I would, what I had considered new cost to the county's budget, that was that cost when we had talked last, or much earlier this year.
So I can definitely see both sides of that argument. I mean, that's very clear on, on where we're getting those two numbers from. I too, when I look at it, look at what's the additional cost on top of it, which is where my decision comes from on the budgetary side of things. And of course, we can disagree on that, and that's fine. But that's just where I'm at with that. So I appreciate all the work. Thank you so much.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule for '24 and adopt a resolution.
Second.
Just motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I, I, going back to the time that we had this discussion, the question went out to our employees, do you want to have Juneteenth as a holiday? And of course, overwhelmingly, they said yes. And I understand that. I think it is an important holiday for, historically, what that, what that means to our country's history. But I think the question was flawed. Again, talking about salaried benefits, anything that enhances the benefit package for our employees is, is a step in the right direction to help recruit and retain our employees. And again, adding an 11th holiday, I think, again, for all, all of our employees, they would prefer to have an 11th holiday. They would prefer to have a 12th, or a 13th, or more days of vacation, because it is to their benefit to have those offered to them. So of course, anything we can do to enhance our salary or benefits, I think is a, is a step in that direction that they would obviously support. But the question wasn't asked the way I think it should have been asked. Again, so it's not that I don't value Juneteenth. I do. But again, what I argued at the time was, I think we ought to be asking employees, would you like to have the freedom to choose? And it's not that I don't support having a very competitive salaried benefits package. I think we, we have to do that. But I would like to just say to our employees that I want to know what you think regarding having freedom to choose a floating holiday. By the way, a lot of, yeah, I always look at the private sector. What are, what are they doing? There's a lot of private sector organizations out there that are offering, offering at least one or two floating holidays a year. And so in terms of being competitive with the private sector, you know, retaining and recruiting employees, we ought to be keeping our awareness that what's happening in the private sector should help drive our policy here as well. So once again, it's not that I won't support the, I guess I'll support this for now, but I'd like to renew my, my request that I believe that our employees deserve to have some freedom and some choice in this. And again, would provide, potentially, if we wanted to change something in the future, provide additional services to our community in a way that, that they, you know, even though we know that Wichita, even the state of Kansas and the federal government may have done that, I don't know how many other communities have, other, other cities. And we have 20 cities in Cedric County. What are the other cities doing? We have, we have government employees, lots of places that are providing services. They're not all getting the day off. It's not universal. So again, there is a disagreement between different municipalities. Maybe it's trending in that direction. But the other thing I, other thing I noticed here, again, just a final comment here, is we have several holidays that are just two or three weeks apart. And I don't, you know, again, we have several times where there's three months where there's no, no holidays whatsoever. And again, to me, the way these are packed together in the middle of summer, it just me, it just means it's, we're making choices for the employees when they have to take time off, or when they get to enjoy a day off. And their, and their, their input to this discussion isn't even considered. So with that, I'll, I'll vote for this, this year, but I, I'd like to renew my, our request that I think we ought to be, again, asking the employees different questions than we did in the past. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a final comment. As I look at the list, I don't know, the conversation centered around Juneteenth because it was the last one that we've added in. I'm looking at the 11 here. I don't know what we, I, I don't know what we do while maintaining morale, keeping to the trend of what's happening with the governments around us. I mean, I look at President's Day. I, I look at these things. I say, I, I just don't know. This is a complex conversation, simply because I don't know what we would remove to try to stay within a budgetary goal of sorts. And again, I'm leaning towards, symbolically to our staff, the 2,700 employees in Cedric County government, saying, hey, we, we care about your, we care about honoring these things for you and giving you time off with your family as you choose. I appreciate the conversation around floating holidays. I, I know it's more popular in the private sector, but I, I, I see this list of 11, and I know this is a very challenging conversation. And I think it's important that we signal to our, to our staff that, hey, we take these things serious, and that budgetary side of this is a serious conversation too. How many of our employees on President's Day, or Juneteenth, or Independence Day have to work? What percentage do you know? Mostly in public safety, I'd imagine, but.
Oh, I, I don't know a percentage. But yes, majority of them are in public safety.
Yeah. So that, my thought in this is, is understanding that when they're going on call- So that, my thought in this is, is understanding that when they're going on calls and they have Wichita Fire or other, other, other public safety, that they're, it's important to us that they're on that same playing field in regards to they're being paid the same wage, or not the same wage, but the same, they're being honored with holiday pay if they're going to the same emergency calls as their counterparts from the other parts. So for me, this is very much symbolic, but it's also very much about staffing morale and staffing stability. And, and so I appreciate that this conversation is centered around the economic side of this. And I think it's an important conversation for us to have. But I look at this 11, and I don't, I don't know what we bounce in order to remain competitive and to keep staff morale where it needs to be. So that's my final thought.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Very shortly, I won't speak very long. But if we're concentrating on recruiting, retaining employees, the one issue that I bring up over and over again, and every time I read an article in the newspaper, I forwarded it to Tom Stoltz, and I did, did it again this morning, and that's with childcare. It's an issue that I bring up over and over again, and I don't see that we've even moved the needle one inch on this issue. So if we're really caring about our employees, and I do care about our employees, even though I'm going to vote against this, because I, I have some serious questions about the general fund funding. But if we're really concerned, I sure wish that we would start looking at childcare. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Sheena. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on November 2, 2023, and Item Three, from the Regular Meeting on October 26, 2023.
Good morning.
Joe?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. As was mentioned, we have two items that come from the Regular Board of Contracts, Bidding and Contracts on November 2. And then we have one item that's from the October 26 date. So we'll start with the most recent ones, the November 2. The first one is Cedric County Sheriff's Firing Range BURM, Lead Removal and Rebuild for Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to accept the alternate bid from E N Range Incorporated, and it's in the amount of $96,000. The second item is the Main Courthouse Chiller Number One Rebuild for Facilities Maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Johnson Controls Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $89,672.08. Then we turn our attention to the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of October 26. And this item is the Cedric County Adult Detention Facility Lock retrofit, camera additions, master control room remodel. This is the item that Ms. Polerso mentioned earlier as part of the ARPA funding. This is for project services in the sheriff's office. The recommendation on this one is to accept the low bid from Harmon Huffman Construction Group, and it's in the amount of $10,010,000. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have and recommend approval of the three items.
Okay. Any questions on these items? I don't see any, so I will make a recommendation, or make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Mr. Manager?
Morning again. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items H through V this morning.
Okay. Commissioners, you've had a chance to review. Any questions or comments about any of the items on the consent? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Items H through V as invictor.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And we will recess from regular meeting, and we will call the governing body of Fire District Number One to order. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda?
I don't see anybody signed up for the Public Agenda on the Fire Agenda. Next item, please.
New Business, Item A, Resolution to Approve Fire District 2024 Holidays.
Okay. Sheena, you're back.
I am back. Again, Sheena Schmitt's Chief Human Resources Officer. This is the same item that we previously discussed. This is the 2024 holidays. This would be applicable to the Fire District.
Okay. Well, we had some comments before, so I'll make a motion that we approve as the holiday schedule is presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Mr. Manager?
Good morning again, Commissioner. We recommend this morning that you approve Consent Item B on the Fire Agenda.
Okay. Any questions on Consent Item B? There's only one consent item. Being none, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution, or, well, I'll make a motion we approve Consent Item B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Anything, next item, please.
Other?
Anybody have anything on the Fire Agenda under Other? I don't see any. There's no executive session. So if there's anything else, come before the Fire District Board. I don't see. So we will adjourn the Fire District and return to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Med report?
Anybody have anything to report on their committees? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update on the South Central Regional Psychiatric Hospital Advisory Panel. We met again on Monday, and I sent, I gave all of you all the paperwork. I was missing one thing, so I have that here, and I'll pass that out after this is over. But we had a really good conversation and got updates on really what Lerner and also what I mean, like the services they provide and some of the number and data about where their patients are coming from and how much that's coming from Cedric County. And then Tim Kaufman gave a really great update on a lot of the services that Cedric County provides through Calm Care to our community. Going forward, we're looking at figuring out with a budget that we have, which is 25 from Spark, and then 15 from the Keadads' operational budget that they have for this hospital going forward. So we have 40 million, and we're looking at a 50 to 100-bed hospital. Right now, we're budgeted for a 50-bed hospital with, but we have to make sure that it's going to be ready to go to 100, and there's not going to be additional things needed except adding those rooms for, for that. And so we were talking, just roundtable, and I asked the question about if Keadads has 15 million in their annual budget for operational cost, what that looks like. If we're not, if this isn't completed in the next year, would we have an additional 15 to spend on the building? And that's something that he's going to have to get approved by the governor and the budget. And if that's possible, could we then look at maybe expanding from 50 beds to 75 or 100, or whatever that would allow? So that's a conversation that we'll continue to have. I brought up that I haven't been to either of those hospitals, and I would love to be able to visit those. And so Tanya Cole's been doing all kinds of work on this project, which thank you for that. And so we're going to try to figure out a time to go and look at those facilities. And if anybody's interested in doing that as well, I think you'd be more than welcome to come, or we could find another day that works if there's more than two of us that want to. And we're also looking at creating a subcommittee so we can figure out when and how we're going to address the public on location. We have to be very careful because of the tight timeframe. We can't say a whole lot, but we can definitely get feedback on maybe areas kind of more broadly and general from, from the public and just hear their opinion. In the papers that I gave you is just a little postcard that has a survey on there so that we're sending out to the community. And we have this in English and in Spanish, so I'll be sharing those on my socials as well, if you guys would be interested in doing that, just so we can get a better understanding of where this should not be. Just really, early data is indicating that people really just don't want to make sure that this isn't by like a school, an elementary school, or daycare or something. So as that continues to get more information in, I'll make sure that you guys receive that. But you have all the paperwork that I've had up to this point. And if you have any questions that you want me to take back, I'm more than happy to do that. And if you have any other additional questions about the meeting, please let me know, and we can address those. But I thought it was a really good meeting so far, and this has to go pretty quickly. So a lot is covered in the two hours that we're together. And I anticipate that we'll have probably another one or two subcommittees kind of going at the same time, just because of the workload that this is going to have. So that's my update on that. And then I also really quickly just want to thank Commissioner Dennis, because you, you and Commissioner Beatty serve on the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. Because of the work that I'm doing on the advisory panel for the psychiatric hospital, I thought it makes sense if, if I'd be able to get on that, just to see, one of the things that we're going to look at is workforce development. And I know that's something that the coalition is doing a lot of work on as well. And so it just made sense that I would be on that as well. And so I just want to thank you for allowing me to take your seat on that, and that'll transition next month in December. So I appreciate the work that you both do on there, and just want to make sure that I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be at that table going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, and thank you for serving on the, on the, on that committee. Yeah, the advisory panel.
It's a long name.
Yeah, I've been able to watch a lot of it and attend part of it. It's, and Tom thinks you're serving on it as well, and others in Cedric County that are serving on that. Tanya, thanks for your work on that as well. That's so important for us. I know some people probably don't, don't care that much, because it's, it's a state mental hospital. It's quasi-correctional in a way, but it's evaluation. So it's, it's not on everybody's radar, but it is vitally important to our, to our region and our, and our community. So thank you for serving on that, and thank you, others, the Cedric County, they're playing a role there. And if, if any of us need to help from, from whatever we can help with, please, please let us know. And thanks for keeping us updated. Who else has got anything under Other Committee Reports? Okay. Next item, please.
Other?
Yes, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of things. I just want to remind the community, tomorrow at Century Two, we have the Junior ROTC Ceremony. This is where thousands of young people from our community come together in uniform and parade, do a parade, and there's some good speeches and things like that that happen. But to see these young people in our community come together the way they do with the, with the leadership that, that they present, if you will, at this, at this event is very impressive. And so I'm looking forward to that. Again, typically, some commissioners do, normally do attend that. I, I plan to be there again 10 o'clock tomorrow. I know we did have a resolution last week. We'll be reading that resolution at this parade tomorrow at Century Two. It's, again, it's indoors at 10 a.m. So again, that's very exciting for us. And then, secondly, I want to just commend our election commissioner, Laura Rainwater. She's in the audience tonight, or this after, this morning. Just some data on this, there were 725 precincts in Cedric County, and I believe the results ran around 8:45 last night. And this is the first larger election that she's been responsible for, and I think things went pretty smoothly. I know I voted yesterday at my poll site, and it couldn't have been any easier. It was very smooth and easy. The folks were trained, they did a great job. The equipment worked better than anybody could even imagine. It was an excellent process. I really appreciated all that was in, in place there to make that a great experience. But altogether, 77,253 people have cast a ballot so far, with 23.24% of our registration. Again, we have about 526,000 people in Cedric County. Yesterday, the registration number was 332,441 registered voters. And so there's still folks out there that aren't registered. I don't know why, but they could be registered. And there's also about three out of every four registered, registered voters made a choice not to vote. So again, I'd like to just encourage them to engage the electoral process. Overall, it was a great experience, and I just want to say that the election staff and our election commissioner and really every, all the planning that went into that, they did a tremendous job. Thank you for your work. Appreciate that. And that's really all I want to say. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Howe, for bringing up the parade, the formal military parade tomorrow, 10 o'clock. But I also want to mention that on Saturday morning, starting at 11 o'clock, is the Wichita Formal Veterans Day Parade. It will start in front of our courthouse, our old courthouse, and go down Main Street first, across First, over to McLean, back up McLean to Exploration Place. I want to thank Exploration Place for hosting this event this year. A lot of activities are going to take place at Exploration Place on Saturday. All veterans will, and their families and Gold Star families will all have free admittance to Exploration Place. And once they get inside the door, they're going to find there are numerous tables set up that are there to support veterans and to answer questions that they may have. For example, one of my favorites is our Register of Deeds. We'll be collecting DD 214s and filing them permanently for the veteran and provide them back five certified copies and a card that shows that they are veterans so that they can get discounts at local businesses. The cool thing is they just changed the card. If you flip it over on the back, it now has a QR code on the back. If you take a picture of that, it shows every business that provides a discount to veterans. So thanks for that. In addition, Waggon Masters are going to be there. They're going to be cooking hamburgers and hot dogs for everyone that wants to stop at the end of the parade. All the proceeds, it's donation for the hamburgers and hot dogs. But all the proceeds from that donation go to Honor Flight, so that, to recognize our veterans and fly them back to Washington, D.C., to see the monuments and so forth that are there to honor our veterans. So please attend that. Also, there's a show and shine. There's a number of dignitaries that will be speaking that day. There's a lot going on at Exploration Place, so please come out. Let me transition a little bit. I've said a lot of good kudos for Exploration Place. I'm also very proud of our Cedric County Zoo. They are also offering free admission on Veterans Day to the veterans, their families, and Gold Star parents, families. and Gold Star families. So that's a great event if you want to go by the zoo. But there's other things that are happening at the zoo that are really fantastic. Each year, I've gone to Wild Lights, and this year is the best I've ever seen. And it's amazing when you go and take a look at it. Every display there starts out with a frame with white cloth over it, and it's hand-painted. Everything on there is hand-painted. So it's amazing. And this year, huge dragon, theme is Alice in Wonderland. There, probably the most amazing thing is this ginormous pagoda that's probably 30 feet high. And that was erected and hand-painted on site. Make sure you go, it's open Wednesday through Sunday from dusk. Admission is $15 if you're a member, $17 if you're not a member, so please attend that. Final thing, I know Nicole mentioned it at the beginning, but I want to make sure everybody remembers is that we're going to have a town hall meeting on November the 16th, talk about solar, to get feedback from the community, to look at any kind of changes that we may need to make to all of our zoning regulations in the future. So it's at, I'm sorry, it's at the Cedric County Extension Center. And I invite everyone that is interested in solar and how that we regulate that, please attend that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman, I too wanted to thank our elections office for everything. Last night, it was very smooth. I really haven't heard anything about it, which is a great thing. But I also want to thank everybody who ran for office. I mean, putting yourself in that position is not, it's not easy. And to be called to public service, I mean, it really is a calling, and it's hard work. But we have the opportunity in these positions to really move initiatives forward that betters our community and can make things better for the people who live here. And so I just want to thank everybody who ran in these elections. And, you know, if you prevailed, congratulations. I think we all look forward to working with you. And if you did not, I just want to make sure that you realize that we appreciate you running and wanting to serve your community in this way, and hope that you continue to want to be involved, because it takes, it's a community effort, and everybody can lead. And I just want to make sure that we appreciate everybody who stepped up this year. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Lots of events this time of year, and lots of things going on. I want to make sure the community is aware of two others. One, tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m., Wichita Business Journal is hosting an event at Kansas Leadership Center. It's called Engage: Fostering Mental Wellness in the Workplace. It's a panel conversation. I'll be joining the panel with some other business leaders to have a conversation on how we build mental health in our workforce and the importance of that in this community. Second event, tomorrow night, 6:30, the Kansas Aviation Museum's hosting their honors awards program. If you've never been to the Kansas Aviation Museum, I really want to encourage our community to do that. It really celebrates the history of aviation in this community. The leadership over there does a fantastic job of not just the information that they present, but also the events that they're hosting there and the events that they're advocating for in the community. So that's tomorrow night, 6:30. It should be a great time. So thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. On these others, I make a couple of comments. I want to, I know there's a lot of interest at the public. What do we have here? Okay. State Mental Health Hospital? Okay. That's all right. Where was I? So at noon today, there's been a lot of public interest, and I get phone calls and whatever. But at noon today, anybody that's interested in the latest on the Amtrak in our state that is at noon, you can zoom in, you can go to our county website and get the link if you want to see that. Also, about 5:30 tonight, there's a, KDOT is hosting an event out regarding U254, the corridor from the North Junction all the way out to El Dorado. It's got a lot of activity going on, potentially, and especially if Integra develops further right along there. So that's, if those are interested, that's an event tonight. And finally, I want to echo the compliments to our election commissioner. There's been numerous statements, but some of us have had an experience, a history with the challenge of our elections commissioner and our elections department and our elections staff and all those things. And Laura, you're a friend of most all of us anyway, but it was, it's very comforting as we have to, as we support the election office by rules and laws. But it's, that's your second election, and it really has gone well. I hope your staff and everybody and volunteers, thanks all the volunteers that sign up. They do get paid. I guess they're not really volunteers, but get a pay of whopping, what, $11 an hour or something? Something like it. Anyway.
Even less.
Less, so, okay. But anyway, thank you all, and I want to congratulate, as Commissioner Lopez said, congratulate all of the candidates that won, and I want to congratulate all of the candidates that filed to run. And so it is public service, and I just want to congratulate everybody on that. And finally, I'll just say to all the candidates that ran, try to pick up your signs, because it's kind of literary out there right now. So pick up your signs. Anyway, okay. Anything else? I don't see anything. We had a lot of other under other, so thank you. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of Cedric County Commissioners recesses into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:08 for the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing potential purchase of land and buildings for the use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners turns to this room for an executive session at 11:08.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And we'll see everybody 11:08. Thank you. Yes.
Bring us in.
Don't be trying.
I do have a headache today. Thirty seconds.
Could you use the gavel?
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, three, two,
All right. Thank you everybody for coming back to order. I call this meeting back to order. Chairman Meister had to step away for a few minutes. And so we're going to go ahead and wrap this up today. And we are back from executive session. And I would like to declare that there was no binding action taken at the executive session. And so with that, commissioners, is there anything else you'd like to bring up before we adjourn today?
Sure.
All right. We'll see you then. We'll be adjourned. Thank you.